Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I want to welcome those that are joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you that are here in person. We're delighted that you're joining us today. When you walked in, we always encourage you to grab a meeting agenda packet. That way, you can follow along with the discussion today. We also encourage you to go online. All the supporting documents that the commission have to review as we're looking at each of these items, all of that information is made available online at sedgwickcounty.org. We always encourage you to go on. It makes for a good read. We do have a few really important things on the agenda today and a lot of people that we want to celebrate, so I want to get us right to work. So officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, October 1st. We're in October. Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Brett Warkington, Ridgepoint Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Father, thank you that you know all things. You know all the opportunities ahead of us in this great county. You know all the challenges that we face. I pray for wisdom for these dedicated servants here, our commissioners, that they would. No doubt, they're aware of a lot of the opportunities and a lot of the challenges. And give them wisdom and patience and humility. We live in a pretty busted up, fractured world with a lot of opinions, and so I pray for just a peace and a joy and wisdom as we make our way through the agenda this morning. Thank you so much for this county and this wonderful state and our wonderful nation. And please bless us for your glory. And in Jesus's name, I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Brent, thank you, sir, for being here. Give all our best to all the great people at Ridgepoint. Okay? Thank you so much. Bless you, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcement.
Hey, good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We're going to start with county good news today. At the recent 2025 Kansas Emergency Management Association Conference, our Sedgwick County Emergency Management Team walked away with quite a bit of hardware. Director of EM, Julie Simpson, is here to share more.
Hey, Julie, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Simpson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management Director. I do want to introduce the KEMA president, Chansey Smith. He is the emergency manager also from Dickinson County. He is going to kind of read the awards so we know what we're recognizing our folks for. But yes, we walked away with a lot of hardware. We're very proud to share and also talk about our community preparedness. It's not just our department being recognized, but some of our partners through the community as well.
That's great.
Chansey.
Mr. Smith, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. You guys are my first official duty as the president of the Kansas Emergency Management Association. It's an honor to be down here. I'm sorry I'm not the greatest at being formal with everything, but you guys really rocked our conference this year with the quality and the care you guys have in your communities with the fine people that we have sitting out here. And I've been in the organization for 20 years this year and now have the honor of leading the organization forward as we go through these times of budget cuts and people fighting for their jobs and stuff. And that this field is very important to have good people in that because when the times are down and the bad things happen, these are the people that get us out of those times. And when you have this caliber of people right here, you got to fight to keep them in those positions. And I'm going to start off with some volunteers. You have a, we had an outstanding service award, and the outstanding service award recognized individuals or groups inside or outside of the association who have put forth significant effort during their specified period of service for a specific action or accomplishments which further aims the association and beyond performing their regular duties. And who won that this year is your guys' CERT Generator and Light Team for Sedgwick County. And that's a competition that goes throughout the entire state of the Kansas on these, all these organizations, and you guys did it. And what they have on their thing is, the Sedgwick County CERT and Light Generator Team is a specialized group of nine volunteers who have transformed unused equipment into vital resources for the county. In just two and a half years, they have provided critical support by lighting crime scenes, lighting up the courthouse during elections, assisting the town of Mount Hope with backup power and lights. Their dedication and innovation to make an outstanding asset to Sedgwick County and the region and highly deserving of this recognition. And I'd like to present their award to the CERT guys if you guys would come down.
And like you mentioned, it's a nine-person team. Ed Geeson is the team chief. He is here. Andy Ralston, Daryl Stotts, Michael Laramore, Sarah Cotton, Sarah Harrison, Cannon Geeson, and Nick Barker are the nine volunteers who have come together. You know, fortunately, we've not had a disaster, but we have been quite busy supporting our community through some other events. So very honored to present this award to these guys.
Yeah.
The next award that was presented was for the Outstanding Service Award. It recognizes individuals, groups, inside or outside of the association who put forth significant effort during a specific period of service or a specific action accomplishment in the performance of their regular duties. And the National Weather Service, Wichita, won that award. The Wichita Office of National Weather Service is an indispensable partner of emergency management across central Kansas and southeast Kansas. Through timely and accurate information, expert briefings, real-time updates, and strong collaboration during severe weather events, they consistently support emergency managers and first responders in protecting lives and property beyond operations. Their training and outreach and relationship building strengthens preparedness and resilience throughout Northwest Wichita teams. This one was particularly tough for me. I love these guys to death, but I put in the National Weather Service Topeka to win this. And I love my guys in Topeka, and that's who services me in Dixon County. But Vanessa does a great job. Vanessa's fairly new to her position at the Weather Service, and she does an outstanding job for the community.
Yes.
That's a big one.
Very good.
Next, we have the Leon Manell Outstanding Emergency Management Support Professional Award. It's presented in recognition of an individual who provides critical support or behind-the-scenes services vital to services of emergency management organizations. They're above and beyond routine responsibilities. This award was renamed the Leon Manell Award to honor the R A D E F, Ray Def Officer for the Kansas Division of Emergency Preparedness. And Sarah Maganissico, I know I was going to slaughter your name. I asked four times how to say it. But Sarah is the South Central Southeast Community Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross. Sarah serves as the South Central Southeast Community Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross and has been a vital partner in multiple preparedness response and recovery efforts. She played a key role in establishing a family assistance center following the American Airlines Flight 5342 tragedy. Most recently, organized two community assistance centers during the Wichita flash flood emergency. In addition to her Red Cross leadership, Sarah actively contributes as a member of the Sedgwick County Community Emergency Response Team. Her dedication and service makes her highly deserved, excuse me, deserving of this recognition.
Yeah.
Okay, now for my favorite one. We have, this is the first time in the 20 years that I've been in KEMA that this award, these awards have been won by the same person. Usually, it goes to two people. We like to spread stuff out, but when you have so much excellence in one person, you got to give them the both awards. The Randy Reinicker Instructor of the Year Award is an award presented to an individual or team who has performed exemplary service in the provision of emergency management-related education and training programs. Brian Ellis, Sedgwick County Emergency Manager, exemplifies the highest standards of dedication, education, and training, consistently going above and beyond service to his community. His tireless commitment is reflected in the countless hours he invests both on-duty and personal time advancing the knowledge and preparedness through his leadership. And then the highest award that we can give out in emergency management at this conference is the Outstanding Emergency Management Professional of the Year. Brian Ellis also won that award.
That's great.
Since joining Sedgwick County Emergency Management in March of '24, Brian has driven major improvements across the county, region, and state as operations manager. He enhanced coordination with 40-plus agencies, modernized systems, led training of over 100 staff, and co-founded Four County Public Information Working Group. He also rebuilt duty officer procedures, launched EOC Support Team with insert, and advanced ICS, NIMS, and MARK training beyond Sedgwick County. Brian contributes to the statewide initiatives, regional mass notification projects, and Red Cross efforts. His innovation leadership service makes him deserving of the 25, 2025 Owen and Turnteen Emergency Management Professional of the Year.
That's great.
I will also add that Brian is a retired Sedgwick County Fire Department Battalion Chief as well.
Yeah.
Guys, I really appreciate you letting me come and take your time this morning and presenting these guys, but just know how valuable these people are, not only to you but to the entire state of Kansas that we depend on them.
Well, Mr. Smith, thank you so much for all the work you do at KEMA, but also, you know, just honoring and recognizing individuals that do substantial work in our community. These are, some of these individuals that are here with our emergency services under Julie, they're adding to their trophy chest. It's like KU basketball, and they just continue to add to that trophy chest. It's remarkable. They are, we are so proud and so proud of the work that they do. And I would say that I secretly, I think I want to be a meteorologist when I grow up. I'm consistently sending to Rob Lawson in your office messages on my rain gauge. We talk a lot about the rain gauge. So thank you for all the work that you guys do, everyone in this community. Julie is right, we have not had a natural disaster of sorts here in a few years, thankfully. But your work doesn't stop, Julie, and all the work that you guys do in KEMA, everything that you guys do in this state, particularly this year with some floods, the work doesn't stop, and you are preparing and making sure that this community is safe and this state is safe. So we're grateful for all the work that you guys do.
Well, and just know that it only because of the way you allow these people to do their job and to give them the reins to do this that they're succeeding like they are. It takes, it takes that partnership to really go. So understand, it doesn't happen in every community like this.
Very good. Well, thank you again for being here. Congratulations to everybody that won an award. And if you could hang out after we get done proclamations, we'd love you to picture and celebrate with you guys here, here in about five minutes. Okay? Thanks again.
Okay, next up for county good news, I'm going to invite Deputy CFO Brent Shelton to the podium. He's going to talk about the CashVest 90+ Award for 2025 that was received by Sedgwick County Public Finance for its exemplary leadership in public finance liquidity management.
Hey, Brent, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty and Commissioners. For the record, Brent Shelton, and this morning, I'm your Deputy CFO.
Yes.
I'm very proud of the team in finance for receiving this award. A couple of weeks ago, we had a couple of representatives. The chairman and CEO and our relationship manager from Three Plus One flew in from Rochester, New York to present this award to David Floyd and our liquidity management team for their exemplary work in the way that money is being handled by Sedgwick County. What this award is all about, I think, is best epitomized by a story that we're all very familiar with, and that's the parable of the talents. From the book of Matthew, we hear about that, that master that before embarking on a journey, he entrusted a couple of, or three of his servants with money. Two of them returned more money than they were entrusted with, and one buried it in the ground. And when that master returned, he praised those two servants as good and faithful servants because of their stewardship of money. That's what this award is all about. It's not just about investing idle funds because that's the easy part. Even I can tell you that if we get 3.7%, that's going to earn us more than 3.6%. But this award through Three Plus One and their analytics and the National Association of Counties looks at five different things that we do a very good job in Sedgwick County of doing. And the 90+ Award says that we are, we've achieved an overall score of 90 out of 100 for four consecutive quarters, and we're going to have to maintain this going forward. But they want to know what percentage of funds that we have available that we are earning interest on or that we're offsetting bank fees. They look at, their analytics recommend what's called strategic liquidity. That's how much cash we have. And using time horizon information and data to identify how much we can invest and for what duration. They measure the rate on all cash, whether it's earning interest or not, compare that against benchmarks to make sure that we are meeting those market benchmarks. They review our banking structure for optimization and cash flow efficiency for things like, are we writing checks versus doing electronic payments and our efforts there for fraud reduction? And then it's noted that we have a clear and concise investment policy, which you review and approve every year to make sure that we're aligned with state statutes and best practices across the industry. So in other words, this holistic view of our liquidity management recognizes this team, David Floyd, our investment manager, Hope Hernandez, our accounting director, Lori and Showalter Ari, our budget director, and I sit on the team as well, but they do all the heavy lifting with this CashVest 90+ Award, or as they also call it, the seal of stewardship. So I would invite David and Hope to come up in a minute and be recognized for all their work.
Yes.
Here is the 90+ Award from Three Plus One Corporation. This is three years in the making. Our initial CashVest was the 12 months ending July of 2023 with a score of 76. So we ended this past July at a score of 98 and have been steadily improving along the way. As Brent said, it's a reflection on four consecutive quarters of performance, and I'll qualify that, 76, it wasn't a bad thing. The portfolio has always been secure and resilient. It's just that now it's secure, resilient, and I think Brent said elite.
Yeah.
If I can echo that, but just performing at a level that we would, we would hope for it to. And there's still, there's still more to do. We have, we have a lot of available spaces for the years to come on this plaque that Tyler and Garrett provided us, so we'll, we'll keep working after it. Thank you very much. This work's very meaningful to me, very satisfying to, to do it on behalf of, well, it's all about, as Brent said, being good stewards of taxpayer resources and creating the most value for my fellow county employees that provide essential services.
Yeah. David, congratulations, and Hope, and Lori and Brent, Lindsay, everyone in the team, thank you. And I think you nailed it, David, is that what your work is, is returning significantly for the taxpayers of this county. And when the taxpayers see all the credentials that have been lined up through finance over the years, about five consecutive years of perfect audits, we are a AAA bond rated, we're one of 106 counties in the country that have these types of credentials. It's because of your management and your oversight, and the taxpayers of this community can look at what you guys do and the stewardship, and they should be proud. I know we're very proud of what you do. And we've been able to leverage those investment earnings based on your performance and what you've been able to accomplish, your guys' team. We leverage those for the benefit of the taxpayer with one-time investments and things. Over and over again, we've been able to say, hey, we have capacity to do something for this community because of investment earnings and your management of these portfolios. So to the entire team, thank you. Brent, I want to thank you. You, a lot of people don't know, today you're our Deputy CFO, but you do a lot for this county. You're stepping in as the interim appraiser right now, and all this performance, all the things that you do for this county, and yet the teams that you help lead are performing on an elite level. So David, Hope, Lori and Lindsay, thank you. Brent, thank you for the work you do. I tell people all the time, we're going to build a statue of you one day. You're that good at what you do, and we're that appreciative of the work that you guys do. So Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, I put my light on to say a few things, but the chairman summarized it really heartfelt in a true gratitude, and it's very comforting for me to know that at least this part of our county government is, is in good hands, and it's very comforting. And so David, congratulations, Hope, Lori, and she's not here, I don't think. Thank you as well, Lindsay. And Brent, truly, your leadership and your influence has been transitioned to a good, a good group. And so my sincere thanks and congratulations. And David, I hope if you could, I've got a meager savings account. Could you help manage that? Just, okay, well, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Yeah. Congratulations. We're proud of you guys. Thank you for what you do on behalf of Sedgwick County.
Thank you, Chairman.
The '25 general election is just around the corner. You want to keep these date, these upcoming important dates in mind. Tuesday, October 14th is the last date of registered vote. Wednesday, October 15th, advanced voting by mail begins. And then Monday, October 20th, advanced in-person voting begins at the Sedgwick County Election Office. Last but not least, Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Monday, October 13th, 2025, for an in-service day. As always, emergency services will be available by calling or texting 911. And that's all I have for today.
Great job, Nicole. Real quick emphasis on elections. The elections, Commissioner confirmed today, they'll have about 650 poll workers across the county. They need about 50 more people to sign up to work elections. This is really, really crucial. Where the biggest needs are in some of our smaller cities throughout the county. So think about Bentley, think about Mount Hope, think about Colwich. She needs about 50 more poll workers to help complete her staff for this upcoming election. She needs them rather quickly, too. So it's a great act of civil service to go volunteer and to work in elections. So please contact the election commissioner in the election office. Okay? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to point out that there are some student opportunities here as well. I think if they're 16 and above, I think that students that are 16 and above could also do this and earn some money and get a great experience in civics. So I would encourage that as well.
Great, great point. Okay. Any questions for Nicole? Good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, we had one person sign up for public agenda. If you can just make your way over here to the podium. If you can provide your name and address for the record, our friendly county clerk will give you five minutes. When the time runs up, she'll just throw up a little stop sign, and you'll hear a beep. But we, no, we have proclamations, yeah. We have proclamations. So just name an address for the record. Good morning, welcome.
My name is Civil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut. I'm here because I was betrayed. The, how could the central take my house? It was not right. At the time, I was at 2909 North Richmond, at my daughter's house, and they stole my house. I made a police report about it because I didn't know. I had a neighbor call and say, "Civil, someone's at your house." He asked them, "What did he have business for?", and he started cussing at him. And I was devastated. I mean, how would you like it if you find out that your house is destroyed? My house was a safe haven for kids that were in drug-infested places and alcohol-infested places. I have been there for the community. I actually worked on the election board, 1984 to 2007. I was adult safety patrol at Franklin Elementary. I was the first one to do it, and I was so devastated. I come down and I see my house gone. And why it was gone, the Evergy went and put tree limbs in my yard, big ones, and semi-tires. I felt I was really betrayed. I would offer you guys, I can't even get with the city, you know, the city commissioners. I have got this dud, and they won't answer my questions. I am so devastated. I was homeless, and then they put me at the water lock, and that was dangerous. I had a man break into my hotel room, and then they put me at Mount Carmel. And then I had drug-infested people as my next-door neighbors. The police were called all the time. I never got the information. And when I asked Robert Layton, the city manager, what happened, who's the ones that did it, he wouldn't answer. And Brandon Johnson and Becky Tuttle and Maggie Ballard would not answer. I am devastated. I come back to my hometown to be welcomed, but I've been betrayed. I mean, I don't even like my town. I'm sorry. I don't like it. I tell my relatives in different states, "Don't come to Wichita. Don't come." I'm so devastated. I'm sorry. I'm- I might be taking up your time, but I'm fragile. I have worked for the election board, like you said, 1984, 2007. Marilyn Chapman was my boss. And I'm just devastated. I want answers. And they should not, oh, I have a next-door neighbor at 324, Joan Rapp. She has a tree limb on her roof. She needs a roof done. And she also needs to get the lead paint off her house. But no Central comes at her. They came at me. I'm done. I always thought that if I come back to Wichita, I would be welcome. But instead, I have been a person that was treated like I don't belong here. You know what I mean? I don't know if you know, but I feel that I want justice. They stole my stuff, the Central. They stole my stuff, my property. They did not contact me. They knew where I was. I told them where I was. And my daughter, when we came down the street, she started crying. She's, "Oh, my gosh, they took our house." And I was like, "Oh, my gosh, they did." You don't understand. I don't like being treated wrong. But that's how I feel.
Understood. Civil, thank you. You're always welcome to come here in public comment. I would just say, these comments here, a lot of it seems to be, we don't have a housing department at the county, so a lot of it's City of Wichita. So what I'll do for is I'll make sure your testimony, based on the address you provided, I'll make sure it's sent over to the city council member at the City of Wichita.
Well, I hope so.
Okay. Thank you, Civil. Appreciate it. That was all for public comment today. I'll make a motion to receive and file public comment. We have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, if you see items A and B, all Commissioners were present at both meetings. So unless there's an objection, I'd like to combine both the meeting minutes of September 3rd and 10th into one motion. Okay, seeing none. I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 3rd and September 10th of 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Family Promise Week.
Okay. A wonderful proclamation for a wonderful organization. Proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, family homelessness is an often unseen crisis impacting many Sedgwick County children and parents who are working hard to stay together while facing overwhelming challenges. And whereas, Family Promise of Greater Wichita has provided holistic, community-based solutions to family homelessness since 2016, uniting the faith community, volunteers, and service providers who work together to restore dignity, offer practical support, and help families find a path forward. And whereas, Family Promise partners with local landlords, schools, and social services to prevent homelessness before it begins, saving families from trauma in our county from long-term social and financial costs. And whereas, more than 3,000 individuals, including over 2,000 children, have been served through Family Promise programs in Sedgwick County. And the organization continues to expand its reach and its impact each year. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan Beatty, and the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 10th, 2025, as Family Promise Week. We proclaim that in Sedgwick County, and we encourage all residents to raise awareness, take action, and support the local efforts helping all families find safety, stability, and a future that's filled with promise. Commissioners, you've heard that proclamation. I make a motion to approve it as read.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is Dawn Ebb. She's the executive director of Family Promise of Greater Wichita. Dawn, you and your team, welcome. We're glad you're here today.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman Beatty and the Sedgwick County Commissioners for this recognition. And we serve the most vulnerable in our community, families with children. And some of my team is here today as well. And our community-driven support is really proving to have some long-term success rates with families building that new foundation. And so we're just so grateful for our elected officials supporting us in this very important work. So thank you.
It is very important work. Dawn, a couple of questions real quick while we have you. Always want to take this opportunity. You know, we do a pretty good job in this community. If you think about subsets of the homeless population, think about veterans. I think we do a really good job. Single men, we do a really good job in this community. We oftentimes don't have the resources for, particularly for women experiencing homelessness and families and children. That's where you guys have stepped into the gap. And we read those numbers, 3,000 families, 2,000 children. Am I right in saying that there aren't as many resources, with the exception of a few, including Family Promise, for families that are experiencing homelessness?
Yeah, there aren't as many resources, and it is an invisible crisis. So you're not going to see them on the streets. They're worried about their children. And so they're more hidden in hotels, cars, and doubled up. But they are very vulnerable. And you think about like the generational impact of, you know, making sure that, you know, we have shirts that say, "Every child deserves a home." And we definitely believe that wholeheartedly.
Yeah. What are some of the biggest barriers you guys face in regards to family homelessness?
Yeah, family homelessness is a unique issue that we work tirelessly every day to solve. But you have children, so you have childcare issues, you have transportation issues, it's hard to take four kids on the bus system. It just provides just a more difficult, higher barrier solution to the problem. But we are here to work with each family. Every family's different, and so we work really holistically to see what are those barriers that each family needs, and we do it one family at a time.
Sure do. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you for what you do. I had the opportunity two weeks ago to go down to San Antonio to see Haven for Hope. I'm sure you're aware of that. One of my takeaways was the amount of families that were involved in this homelessness issue going on in San Antonio. I was able to tour the entire facility and to see single parents and so many little ones, all the way from infants and toddlers to maybe high school students. But it was just a very sobering takeaway to see that. And of course, how they handle that is maybe an example to us on maybe how we can do maybe more here in Sedgwick County. But this is a huge resource for our community. I want to say thank you for your service to our community. This is a very challenging problem, and it's one of those things we don't talk about very often. We need to. But thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for what you do. Several years ago, whenever I was on the Wichita City Council, I'd worked with Family Promise, and it really opened my eyes to just how vulnerable these children are, not just from other folks on the street and having to hide and protect them, but also a lot of times from government resources, that people fear that they're going to lose their children. So appreciate everything you guys do to step up, work with the churches, and work with the community, and try to get everybody the resources they need. So thanks for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Dawn, we're excited to celebrate Family Promise Week. You have some staff here. Would you maybe introduce some of them, or you just wave, or we want to make sure?
Yeah, so I have a couple of board members, David Bates and Camera, if you guys could wave. And then I have four staff members, Beth Schaefer, Sarah Frozy, Kate Ferris, and Cecilia Long.
Well, thank you for all the work you got to do. Okay, hang tight. We'll get some pictures here just real short. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, proclamation declaring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay, we've asked Commissioner Howe to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored to read this today. It says, "Whereas, Sedgwick County is honored to be home to a vibrant Latino-Hispanic community whose roots span across Latin America, bringing a rich tapestry of cultures, languages, and traditions that contribute to the diversity of our county. And whereas, Latino-Hispanics have played a pivotal role in shaping our social, cultural, and economic landscape, contributing to every sector from arts and education to business, civic leadership, and beyond. And whereas, Sedgwick County takes pride in its strong partnership with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which tirelessly advocates for the economic advancement and empowerment of Hispanic businesses, fostering a more inclusive and prosperous community for all. And whereas, Hispanic heritage is an integral part of this community's identity, enhancing it with unique traditions, culinary delights, artistic expressions, and cultural celebrations, thereby enriching the lives of all residents. Now therefore be resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And we encourage all residents to honor the contributions of the Latino-Hispanic community, participate in cultural events, and join in celebrating the rich diversity that makes our county unique." So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we would adopt this proclamation.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
And to receive the proclamation today, I have Gary Torres, who's the president of the Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And as you guys, in fact, once you all come down, because I want to talk about all of you all.
Yeah, come on down.
Come on down, you guys. Be with Gary. I wanted just to share, I've gotten to know Gary over the last several years. He is a tremendous personality. In fact, he retired not too long ago, but he's not really retired because he spends a huge amount of time promoting and advancing, if you will, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. How do I know that? Because I'm actually on the board. And I share that very proudly, that I get to serve alongside these folks. And you say, "Why, am I Hispanic?" No, I don't speak Spanish. I'm not Hispanic. But I love what they do. And if you don't realize how important the Hispanic community is to Sedgwick County, you may be missing really the point of today's proclamation. I'll share some stats in just a moment. But Gary, I want to say thank you for being here. I will encourage you to say whatever you feel like you need to say today. But I want to just also share a few more things after that. So please.
Thank you. I have a couple of words. No, just kidding. Better late than never. I mean, this is my first year as the chair of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and unknown to me, I was supposed to submit this like a month before. But Jim and Commissioner Beatty made this happen for us. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, distinguished guests, and members of our community. On behalf of the Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic community we represent, I want to sincerely thank you for this proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. This honor is not only celebrates our culture, traditions, and contribution, but also reaffirms the importance of unity, our rich heritage, and opportunity in Sedgwick County. We are proud to be part of this community, working side by side with leaders, businesses, and families to create a stronger and more inclusive future. Today's recognition reminds us that when we celebrate our heritage and contribution, we also strengthen the bonds that bring us together. Thank you again for this meaningful acknowledgement and for your continued support of our community. En español, buenos dias, comisionados, distinguidos, invitados y miembros de nuestra comunidad. En nombre de la cámara de comercio hispana de Wichita y de la comunidad hispana que representamos, quiero agradecer sinceramente esta proclamación en reconocimiento a mes de la gerencia hispana. Este honor no solo celebra nuestra cultura tradicional y contribuciones, sino que también reafirma la importancia de la unidad, nuestra rica gerencia y las oportunidades en el condado de Sedgwick. Estamos orgullosos de ser parte de esta comunidad, trabajando junto a líderes, negocios, y familias para construir un futuro más fuerte e incluyente. Este reconocimiento nos recuerda que a celebrar nuestra gerencia y contribuciones también fortalecemos los lazos que nos unen. Muchas gracias de momento por este valioso reconocimiento y por su continua apoyo a nuestra comunidad. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. So I want to continue just a little bit, Gary. So what I like about Gary Torres is his heart for the business community especially. He is a great uniter, if you will, of bringing everybody in this entire city together again. When you do some study on this topic, you might be surprised, this is 2023 data, but the data's changing about 1% per year. I'll just say that upfront. There's over almost 85,000 Hispanics in the Sedgwick County area three years ago. So we're more than one to six. In other words, for every six people in our community, one of those is Hispanic. And I just wanted to point that out because it is a very, very important part of our economy. And we want, I want businesses, whether it be black-owned businesses, any businesses, women-owned businesses, you name it, certainly Hispanic businesses, to be successful. And one of my jobs, one of our jobs, I think, is to get the government out of the way to empower you guys to be as profitable and successful and as prosperous as possible. So we have a role to play here. And I just think that in today's culture, there's sometimes people maybe treat Hispanics rudely, don't realize how important this is to our community. And I just think that we ought to challenge ourselves to, again, the proclamation, actually, if you read it very closely, it actually is a call to unity. Unity is a good thing. He talks about diversity, but unity is really our goal. And to bring us together again, it shows appreciation and respect for one another. And I think we need to do better as a community to come together with unity. And so with that, there's a lot of other things I could read here today, but I just want to say, I'm proud of what you guys have done, and I'm proud of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce especially. But I value the Hispanic culture. By the way, I probably should have done this about a month ago, because Hispanic Heritage Month started really September 15th, as I said a moment ago. We have two more weeks. And so please do celebrate the Hispanic culture and community that we have here in our county. And I will do that, and I just encourage everybody else to do that as well. Show appreciation for the Hispanics that we have in our community. Thank you for what you do, Gary, and that's all I have to say.
Yeah. One quick note, 47,000 kids in USD 259, 38% of them are Hispanic-Latino descent, the largest demographic. So the future is very much influenced by the Hispanic and Latino communities. I want to say a very special thank you. You do work all across the county and all across the city, but a very special thank you for the work you're doing in the North End. My dad's family grew up 25th and Jackson for 40 years, and my mom's family grew up at 25th and Arkansas for 40 years. It's very much a part of our family. So the work you're doing in the North End, particularly in the Nomar District, God bless you, thank you for the work you're doing.
Let me get to one more point, just to highlight how big of a demographic this is. If you look at our African-American and Black community, the Hispanic community is more than twice the population for Sedgwick County. And so, again, we value people of all races and ethnic backgrounds. I just think we need to stress that more and more. The Asian community, which is primarily in District 5, is only about 5% of Sedgwick County's population versus 16.1% to 16.2% of our population for Hispanics. So you think about our, the largest minority population we have in Sedgwick County is the Hispanic community. And so I think it's, we just want to miss the point. If you don't value what's going on in the Hispanic community, then we're really not doing it right. We've got to do better. Chairman, thanks for the extra chance to speak a little bit more. Appreciate it.
Gary, team, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. Okay, we've got a lot to celebrate, from the award winners to proclamations. If you can give us just a five-minute break, we're going to step out in the atrium, take some pictures, celebrate, and then back to business. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to pause for a second and go really celebrate a lot of wonderful award winners and some proclamations. So, back to business we go. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments.
Mr. Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. I've got a handful of appointments here. Item E is a resolution appointing Rick Whitehill as Commissioner Bluebaugh's recommended appointment to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. Item F is a resolution reappointing City of Bel Air Police Chief Daryl Atterbury to the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board, as recommended by Dr. Shelley Stedman, the Regional Forensic Science Center Director. Item G is a resolution reappointing Dr. Ronald Varner to that same board, as recommended by Dr. Stedman. And then, item H is a resolution reappointing Dr. Scott Kipper as a deputy district coroner, as recommended by Dr. Timothy Guerill, the Sedgwick County, Kansas District Coroner. I did want to point out that this particular item has a, an accompanying agenda item on the consent agenda. It's item U, which is the employment contract for that. State law requires this position be appointed by resolution, which is why this is a separate item on your agenda. Recommended action is to adopt all of these resolutions.
Okay. Commissioners, why don't we go ahead and take the motions? And then, we have Kelly Arnold here, a county clerk, and then we'll have some comments after that. So, without objection, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments in items E, F, G, and H. Second, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And if you are here today for an appointment or reappointment, Kelly Arnold is here, can swear you in, and then we'll have some comments and.
All right. Good morning, Ministers. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm not going to say the name of the board, but I do appreciate the commission and particularly Commissioner Bluebaugh giving me an opportunity to serve. So, and thank you very much.
Richard, thank you very much. Rick, thanks. Oh, I said, Richard, it's his son. I coached his son for four years in junior football, but I appreciate you being here, appreciate you stepping up and working on this board. I know you're a great guy, and you're going to do great on this board. So, thank you very much for serving.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it.
All right. Chief.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
Chief.
Commission, thank you very much for letting me serve. I appreciate the opportunity to be a voice with Dr. Stedman at the Forensic Science Center for the small-town agencies in the county. So, being able to be that conduit so that we can have good communication back and forth is very important, and I'm very happy to fill that role.
Well, Chief, and for those, for the public to know, this chief is Bel Air Police. And I appreciate the recommendation, Dr. Stedman, because your voice on this board, obviously what we do, what Dr. Stedman's team does at the Forensic Science Center very much impacts and influences the work of law enforcement, the District Attorney's Office, the courts. It's so intertwined. So, your voice on that board, providing advice and consent, is going to be very much needed and very, or very much appreciative that you're willing to serve in your community yet again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Kelly, thanks, sir. Okay, done with the appointments, moving on to new business. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item I, Fourth Amendment to Lease of Space for a Tag Office with Shake &amp; Big Partners LLC.
Okay, Thomas Henry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. So, I will briefly go over the terms of the amendment that's before you today, and then hand it off to Brandy to explain the purpose and the scope of what our office is doing in relation to this amendment. So, we currently have a lease for the East Tag Office that is set to expire November 30th, 2028. This amendment would move the termination date to December 31st of this year. In order to make that happen, there's going to be a cost of, a one-time cost of $410,000 that will be due within 30 days of the effective date of this amendment. Rent will continue to be paid through, from now until the end of the year, and we will be responsible for the real estate taxes for this property for 2025 as a product of this amendment. The only other thing of interest in the amendment is that the landlord will have the ability to list the property for sale or lease immediately upon execution of this agreement or this amendment. And to the extent that he's able to find a buyer or a tenant prior to December 31st, there is the option for us to mutually agree to an earlier expiration date, which would reduce the amount of rent that we would pay between now and the end of the lease. One other thing of note, aside from the amendment, there is now also a resolution that is part of what you're approving today that allows for a fund transfer that would cover the costs of the $410,000, moving it to the auto license fund. So, with that, I will hand it off to Brandy Bailey.
Yeah, our treasurer, Brandy Bailey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Bailey, your county treasurer. First, I want to say, Chairman Beatty, Happy National Pumpkin Spice Day.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, the citizens of Sedgwick County, they want more efficient options to complete the work that the State of Kansas makes difficult for us. That is why I am recommending consolidating the Kellogg Tag Office to the Douglas Tag Office. This move will allow us to better serve the citizens of Sedgwick County, bringing all operations to one centralized location that will give us the opportunity to strategically expand our resources and capacities due to the growing demands of title work, renewals, placards, lien releases, and other services we offer. With this change, every window will be fully staffed throughout the day at the Douglas Tag Office. It will allow our staff to efficiently serve the more than 650 people we see daily and the over 3,100 transactions we are completing on a daily basis. I will also have the ability to explore expanding my office hours, opening them prior to the 8:00 a.m. and then closing it possibly after the 5:00 p.m., allowing this to accommodate anyone regardless of where they live or what their schedules demand. There is still, there will still be plenty of spaces, places in Sedgwick County residents can go to do their renewals, title works, and other services. In addition to our three satellite offices that I currently have at the Kansas Drivers' Licensing Center located at 620 North Rock Road in Derby, Park City City Hall, it's at 1941 East 61st Street in Park City, and the West Wichita Drivers' Licensing Center at 610 South Tyler Road, I have plans to add more. Three more locations will open this month, and it's to meet the demands of Sedgwick County, to make it closer to where they work, closer to where they live, and they spend their day. These locations will be located here at the Ruffin Building inside my tax office at 100 North Broadway, Suite 100, Hayesville City Hall, 200 West Grand in Haysville, and then at the Sedgwick County Extension Office located at 70012 West 21st Street North. These convenient and accessible locations will give our taxpayers more options to complete their work that the State of Kansas has been making difficult. Lastly, I am also working with to make the tiling process easier for Sedgwick County residents. The goal is to create a program that allows the auto dealerships to handle the title work on behalf of the citizens, allowing the tag office then to complete the backend process. This will lead to less foot traffic and lower wait times at the Douglas Tag Office. And I will say, I have, I did meet with a dealer yesterday, and it was very positive meeting, and I think we're on board to start moving forward with this process. Thanks to the partnerships I am fostering, this expansion could create six to eight additional locations at zero cost to Sedgwick County. Consolidating the Kellogg Tag Office will also save the county over $350,000 per year and more than $1 million over the term of the lease that was set to expire in November of 2028. It is important to know that no jobs will be lost during this transition. This move will lead to more efficient and positive experience. Meanwhile, we will continue to fight for change and structure in handling the tag and renewal process created by the state. Moving our operations to one singular site at the Douglas location is a strategy that will allow us to push for reform in Sedgwick County and throughout this state. My staff has displayed the resilience under the pressure of helping residents who deal with long waits. We are continuing to inform our citizens about ways to how to make the process more efficient, including creating a checklist before you come in to know exactly what is needed. And then, also, we've newly updated our website, so that way it makes it a little bit more easier to find information. And one other thing we're asking the citizens, residents, to do is if you are making an appointment at our tag office right now, and we have a lot that are not showing up for these appointments. So, if you're not going to show up for your appointment, please go out and cancel those appointments, so that way it opens a spot up for someone else that may be waiting.
I do know.
This move will allow for more efficient and accurate experience for the residents of Sedgwick County. And with that, I'll stand with any questions.
Okay, Brandy, thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that's been going on. Thank you, Legal, for all the work that, with the discussion with this current landlord. I'll make a couple of comments, and we'll open it up to the bench for some questions. I'm sure there'll be a few. I would just say that, a couple of things. One, I think my perspective is you're an independently elected treasurer, is that you have autonomy to make decisions for the tag office and the tax portion that you do. And our job, and our role, is about the appropriation of the funds, to make sure that you have the resources to do this. I would not support a plan financially if I didn't believe in the strategy. I think it's very important that we understand that there's several different veins that we're working through right now in support of what you're doing at the tag office. The first is the long-term play with the state legislature. We all know, I think everyone by and large can say that what's happening right now at tag offices across the state of Kansas and every county is not acceptable. The experience is not acceptable for a lot of different reasons. But the sweeping reforms we're asking for, the servers, all 105 counties on one server that crashes two to three times a week, the personal plates having to do in-person renewals every five years, creating surge traffic like we're seeing here this year, and the challenges with the fee allocation, that on a $30 tag, we're only receiving 70 cents at the county. So, historically, we've had to subsidize a property tax dollars for what should be a fee-generated service. Those are sweeping reforms that we're working with the state on, but those are long-term plays. So, I want to publicly thank you that you're not waiting for the long-term reforms, that you're trying to take action now. You're trying to do things now to improve the experience now. The consolidation of the office, to create one mega office, is not going to create longer wait times. It's going to take all the resources and consolidate them to improve the service. But what, I would not support that and buying out that lease if you weren't doing all these satellite offices across the county. You're doing six to eight other satellite, and I think there might be more coming based on our conversations, satellite opportunities where people can have more access to a tag office. That's what makes us work, what you're, the program, you're working with some of the private dealerships and the auto dealerships, to where you're going to try to reduce significant traffic to tag offices. I've talked to several of them already. They're really excited about this opportunity. You're showing leadership and creating that program. So, I just, I want to say that I would not support something if this is going to make the experience of my constituents, our constituents, worse. I'm going to support this because I believe that your plan and your strategy is a step forward, a significant step forward while we wait for the state for some sweeping reforms we're going to request. So, I'm going to be supportive of this today because I believe in your strategy, and I want to thank you for actually trying to intervene and trying to do something while we wait on some reforms from the state.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Blubow.
Thank you, Chairman.
Brandy, as we all know, the public is very frustrated about this, and it seems like a lot of the coverage on this, like over the weekend, and it is concentrated on everyone's frustration. And I hope that we can really get this plan out there, and hopefully the media works with us and communications, so that the public understands that this is a solid plan, and it's going to ease these wait times by a lot. And I just want the messaging to be hopefully more concentrated on this plan, so that people understand it, and less on the frustration. We know everyone's frustrated. We know everyone's very upset about it, about the long waits, about getting there, you know, in the dark waiting. So, hopefully, hopefully our communication plan, we can be effective in folks understanding
I am just as frustrated as everybody else is, and I will say Communications has done a fabulous job of, was working with me and getting messaging out, and so I'm sure hearing this will get more messaging out that, you know, identifies that. Just closing this one office, we're not going to one Tag Office. My hopes is to expand this, and I've got other locations and to get people in and out hopefully a little bit more quickly.
Yeah, yeah, that's my hope as well, that the media works with us and gets this plan out there so people understand that we are taking effective change.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss.
Brandy, thank you for your leadership. You've shown a lot of creative solutions and leadership in some of these creative ideas. So the satellite locations, I absolutely love. I think that it'll be more convenient for the constituents. I would ask, maybe after I finish up some comments, just talking through what it means that no one's losing a job, we're going to be more efficient at the Douglas Office. And I think maybe a little bit more information on what that means as far as breaks. You've, you and I have talked a lot about managing breaks for employees and where it looks like it's empty, but it's, you know, otherwise isn't staffed because you're splitting it between two locations. I think what's going to be really important, and Commissioner Bluebaw just kind of touched on it, was, is communication. We need to communicate with the public often and clearly. Transparency is going to be extremely important as we transition. And then I would just ask if we can get you back after, you know, several weeks of the change in all of these satellites, maybe if you can update us on efficiencies, improvements, and that kind of stuff. So even as you get these satellites off the ground, or these dealerships that are going to partner up with us, we'd like to see you come back and just give some updates. How's it going? Is it working? And are you finding efficiencies? So I guess I'll finish that up and come back to my question, just if you can expand on what the Douglas Office will look like with all of the employees there.
So, what the plan is right now, is right now when you walk into the Douglas Office, we have 29 stations. At any given time, you can walk in and maybe see 12 to 13 stations staffed, and then when lunches and breaks start happening, you start seeing between seven and eight stations staffed. So visually, it looks like we don't have staff. We have staff, but I have a split between two offices. The hopes is now we're bringing everybody to Douglas, all stations will be staffed. And then the staff that don't have a spot for a frontline desk will be in the back working on our mail renewals, our title work, that we're hopefully going to be working with the dealerships on doing on the backend. And then as breaks and lunches come, those individuals in the back of the office will come and take a spot on the front line to cover that spot, so that way then those stations are staying full all day long versus maybe five, down five during an hour because it's lunchtime. You should see people out there all the time, which in hopes is to now keep those lines moving, keep people being able to just come in and out and get through.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a couple of questions and a few, some comments as well. First question is, on this dealership using, doing the Tag Work, I just bought a car not too long ago, and my dealer did in fact do that already, so what's the change exactly?
So, right now, the only dealership that I am aware of in Sedgwick County that's doing it is CarMax. And what CarMax, and I'll tell you kind of what their model is, and this is the model that we're working on to try to get other dealerships on board to do with. So CarMax, when you go in and you buy your car from them, they will take care of all the, all the paperwork that's needed to come to the Tag Office. If you have to have a vehicle inspection, because it's an out-of-state used title, they will send the customer with the title, because they will not sell, they've told us they will not sell a vehicle unless the title is in hand. And so they will take the title, send them out to go get their inspection within a seven-day period. They come back within seven days, then CarMax will take care of the paperwork. So they send us a stack of paperwork every day, maybe 100, 100 different deals. And in our back office, within two to three days, we have a fleet staff that is going through that and is doing all the registration, all, getting all the plates printed, and then they will send the paperwork back to CarMax, and then the customers never have to step foot into the office. And so that is the hopes that we are, we are talking with other dealers to get them on board to start, start doing this process. The dealership I met with yesterday has multiple locations throughout Sedgwick County, and on a, on a monthly basis, we're looking at possibly 400 to 500 individuals that are buying a vehicle from their dealerships, that if we could get this process in place, that's four to 500 people less that we're having to come in within that 60-day window because we're able to do it on the backend.
The vehicle that I purchased at Yost Automotive actually was from out of state, so they even had to get the highway inspection, and they took care of that too. And I didn't, I never made entry to a Tag Office on, on any part of that. Was able to get the paperwork 100% taken care of by that dealer. They collected the funds, they made the payments, and they charged me whatever it cost them. I don't think they made money on it actually. They just did this as a convenience, because when I bought the car, they, they provide that as a service to the customer. So I love what they did. I guess my, my point would be this though, if, if Yost Automotive is doing that, and CarMax is doing that, this is available to any dealer right now, correct? I mean, at least.
Correct, it is.
Okay, and then, on those types of transactions, are you still charging a facility fee for those transactions?
Yes, because we are still bringing it in the house and doing it in-house.
So it leads me to my next question. If someone does this online or through the mail, are they paying a facility fee?
So title work cannot be done on, online right now.
Right.
Or through the mail. They have to come into the office to do title work. But if you're doing a renewal, a renewal, you do not get charged a facility fee if it's done online, or if it's sent in by mail, or if you drop it in the Dropbox. And that is something that I have asked multiple times for the legislatures, that I would like to see changed, because all of that work is being processed in our office, whether they're stepping foot in our office or not, we're still processing that in, in our office.
So I think that is a legislative opportunity, so rather than calling it a facility fee, I'd rather call it a transaction fee. It's supposed to be a fee-funded office, and there is a service being provided that the person receiving the service is not actually paying for, but someone else is paying for it, either through property taxes, or maybe through fees from someone else who actually was in the facility, but the money is being used from one person to cover the, the transaction costs of another person. And that is, that to me is, is not the best way to handle this. So the legislature, one of the things we're asking for, I think, that is our legislative platform, is to adjust the fees appropriately to make sure this office is, continues to be fee-funded. But I think along with that, rather than just simply increasing the fee from $5, I would say that should be redefined as a transaction fee, because there are, and maybe it should be multi, maybe if you come into the facility, you know, there's janitorial, air conditioning, electricity, and other things that are happening there versus just online. But either case, there is a transaction happening, and someone should pay for that cost, rather than if you will hand that over to property taxpayers who have nothing to do with that transaction. So if it's, if it's supposed to be a fee-funded office, it should be a fee-funded office. I think that, so not just raising the caps, but I think also just maybe even redefining what that fee is would be one of my hopes to, to see that discussion happen. I'll just make a comment real quickly. We talk a lot about consolidation and efficiency. If you remove yourself from this entire discussion about Tag Offices, and I must ask anybody in the community, do you support consolidation of government? And if it's more efficient and less cost to the taxpayer, especially if I could argue that it is not any less convenient or any less service, but it's just, it's a move towards efficiency, is that a good thing for us to do? And I think most people would say absolutely. In principle, that makes a lot of sense. I would argue, in this case, this is a consolidation. It is going to save some taxpayer money because the, the footprint is being, you know, brought down to one location versus two. That does, that does save money that can be used for other things like paying for staff, for example. People might argue this less, it's less convenient. Well, I'm not so sure I agree with that, and I'll, I'll say why. The parking over at Edgemore's has never been great, and there are certain times of the month that parking lot still fills up. Did you know that those two offices are literally six miles apart? And if you drive, with construction's not on Kellogg, you can drive from one office to the other in about eight minutes. So in terms of, if someone drives anywhere in Sedgwick County to one of the offices, they're not, they're not significantly different in terms of convenience. But what I do see over there is the 2525 West Douglas has a better parking situation and has a larger office space. And so to me, if you can bring the staff over, I think it's already been argued and said that the, the services will not go down. I, I think I agree with that. If you understand these offices, by bringing everybody to one office, the space there is adequate to handle what was handled in two offices, that one office can handle that better. And I think optics matters, and so to the point that you'll have ideally about twice as many people at those pay windows doing work, I think is a, is a better optic, so. So that's just a, a lot of information there. Number three, I do appreciate the fact that you're adding satellite locations and expanding hours. Those are two things I think has been missed by almost everybody talking about this. I think those are both very, very important in terms of added customer service. When you add satellite locations, and you, and I say, these are by appointment only, but they are providing a service someplace else, like in Derby, now you say in Hayesville, other places. And so that is, people who've actually gone through that process come away actually saying that it's really wonderful. They have a different opinion entirely. They love the service they get at one of these satellite locations because it is very convenient. You walk right in, get serviced immediately, and things, things are quite simple. So that's, that's really good. I would say also, this is in fact your decision, and I recognize you're an authority in this, making this decision. I've, I've had a lot of email, and a lot of people are mad at me potentially for saying, we don't want you guys to consolidate these two offices. That's really not our decision today. That is your decision, and you have the right to do that if you think it's best. And I think, I think you've argued already, this is better for your staff, better for your management of your staff, other reasons why this is a reasonable decision that you're making. But our job as commissioners today is whether we want to spend $410,000 to buy out this lease. And I guess I view this, and you're welcome to comment on this, if, if you were to make that change, and we were not to pay off this lease, I can see an empty building sitting there, and we're paying, making lease payments on, and the county will ultimately be responsible to make those payments. There was a contract with Sedgwick County that was signed by, by the previous treasurer, and that lease payments will be made unless we do something contractually to amend it, which is what we're talking about today. So I view this as, if it's better for you, for all the reasons you've already stipulated, better for you to make this change, and you were to make those changes, but we didn't deal with this building, then we'd be, we'd be, we'd be essentially thrown away about a million dollars. So I view this as, we have to do our part to hopefully reduce the cost to the taxpayers by amending this lease. If we don't do that, you'll end up essentially with everything you've talked about, but an empty building that we're paying for, not being, not being used. Do you agree with what I just said?
Agree with what you say.
I think that's so important, so I'm really glad you said that as well. And then finally, and you're welcome to comment on this as well, I think we talked about modernizing the Tag Services of our entire state. I understand that the reason we do geographic limits, you have, you have to get your tags done in the county that you reside. You can do a driver's license work anywhere in the state. I can go to, you know, Johnson County and get a driver's license taken here, I mean, well, I live here. But I can't do that with tags. You have to go to the county that you live in. Primarily, I think it's because of, the history is, they used to have the embossed plates downstairs or in the back room, they would hand you your plate. But today, they order the plate, it's printed by a third-party vendor, and they're mail, they mail those plates to you at your residence. And so the history of that, in my opinion, leads us to say, what we have right now is a holdover, a geographic limitation that maybe is not, not needed so much today. Can you please comment on that?
So I would agree a little bit with the, with the plates. We used to have those in stock here. But another big thing is the property taxes. So each county has a different property tax rate, and then the cities that are located within each of those counties have their own different property. So, so a lot of that, why it's in a specific county, is because the way the system is programmed, it's you log in and you're programmed, and you're essentially logged in into Sedgwick County's county, because all the property tax rate is there. So if we, and if we're opening it up where it's all statewide, then you're going to have some challenges there unless something is fixed in, in the system to allow the property tax calculation.
So one of the, one of the things we need to talk about here is the state's been charging a $4 modernization fee since 2008. I think I have that right.
Correct.
Just doing simple, simple math based on what happens here in Sedgwick County, I think that the state has collected in excess of $200 million on this fee since 2008. And yet they, as far as I can tell, they've not really modernized a whole lot of anything. I believe they're using those dollars to do other things in the state of Kansas. It's almost more of a tax than a modernization fee. It's called a modernization fee, you, you pay, every transaction is charging $4 to modernize something, but that money has been used for something else. Please comment on that.
So the modernization fee, yes, is still being collected at the Tag Office. That has been brought up by the County Treasurers Association. That needs to go away because there's not being used towards modernization or upgrade in technology. That money now is going to KDOT.
So, KDOT loves the money, and again, that's fine to fund KDOT, but it's not fine to misname, if you will, the tax that supports Take KDOT by calling it a modernization fee. That's, in my opinion, that's unethical that the state continues to do this. And again, I think they've collected more than $200 million that has been essentially shifted to something entirely different in the state of Kansas. Meanwhile, the antiquated and non-dependable computer system that you have to use needs to be modernized. Again, I think the state's had, already received the money. They should follow through and modernize that server system. And when you talk about a barrier to not being able to go to anywhere in the state of Kansas, that's part of this. So imagine, everything is, is computer-based. There's a table, you say, your residence is blank, therefore the sales tax in your location is this, so you have to pay this much in sales tax if you haven't already paid it through your dealer. We're going to charge you property taxes based on where you, you suck, where you live. So again, they look up these tables, they look up the numbers, and they charge the appropriate amount, and they hold the money, remit that to the state of Kansas. This is, this is more of a technol, technology challenge than any other thing. There is no reason why this can't be done. The state needs to choose to do it. That's really the problem.
I would agree with that.
Thank you for that. And then finally, I'd say this, we talked about, for years, we talked about multi-year registrations. People would like to be able to say, if I plan on keeping this car for a long time, and I got money, I'd rather just pay for those transactions ahead of time. Give me the chance to do multi-year registrations. Give us, I guess, one more thing, and again, if you say, well, multi-year registrations, if I, if I sell the car, something happens to the vehicle, I may have to come back to the Tag Office and settle up, okay? There might be a rebate or something, but at the end of the day, trying to avoid how many times I have to go into the office to deal with anything, my opinion is a, is an advantage, so we should be doing that. And then I would, again, you may, you may or may not disagree with me on this one, but five states in the, in the country have done privatization of most of this work. Oklahoma to our south, again, rather than having one Tag Office, they've got 100 Tag Offices, if you will. Some of them do services on Saturday, some of them do services in the evening, a number of different ways to handle this. But this is largely an administrative function of the state of Kansas that you have to do because the state has mandated, mandated this to your responsibility. But at the end of the day, there are other places in the country that have recognized that as an administrative function, that there are people out there that can get certified, licensed, bonded, insured, you know, whatever it takes to essentially be trained and allowed to, you know, to do at least renewals, or perhaps collecting property taxes and sales taxes, doing registrations, verifying insurance cards, things like that. All that work is primarily administrative in nature. Your staff does a great job, but could that be done in the private sector? I think five other states says it can. And I think it's time for the state to have that discussion. So I, I can tell you this, the state sounds like they are absolutely resistant to changing fees. So unless they do, this ends up becoming a property tax problem, and I for one, again, I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, I'm not interested in funding this with property taxes. I'm absolutely against it. And I think that we need to understand that this is going to continue to be a, a bad situation if the state doesn't lean in and at least to provide appropriate funding through adjusting the, the fees that can be charged at your offices, I think, on, on top of that. But it's immoral that they're taking $4 per transaction and not using the money for what was intended to be used. So this entire problem, the frustration people are feeling in these offices is, I'd say, 90% state problem. It's not so much a local problem, it's a 90% state problem. And so they need to lean in to fix this problem, and if they don't do that, I don't think this is going to get a whole lot better for a whole lot of people. But I don't see that property taxes as the way to solve this problem. So that's a lot of comments. Mr. Chairman, I assume there's going to be a motion at some, at some point, and I'll be glad to support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brandy, thanks for your presentation. Tom, thanks for your summary on the financial and the contractual basis. It's just a reminder that, just a couple of things. So we do not, the county does, it's been kind of stated in some previous comments, but just reemphasizing, we do not own that building that you're vacating. Parking has been a challenge sometimes, and so I totally agree. has been a challenge sometimes. And so I totally agree. And I have taken the opportunity recently, with all the comments that we've been receiving, to just pop into the West Office and what you mentioned about the 29 stations that are about half full because of staffing and breaks, whatever. You're right on. The few times I've been there, and I'm thinking, well, you've got vacant opportunity to staff with that. So I think that's really good. And I'm glad that we're, again, back to that building. I want to thank you guys and the owner of the building, Brad Seville, for working with us to allow us to vacate that and settle up about three years, two or three years, three years in advance of what that lease would have been. And finally, my observation, and my compliment to you, is that you've reached out, and we're now working with other government agencies and municipalities within Sedgwick County to utilize some of their office for free?
For free, yes.
For free. So thank you to the Hayesvilles and the Derbies and the other communities for allowing us to be there, have a presence. So our expenses to just make sure we have IT connection and...
Yeah. So the only thing we ask for when we go to these locations is just have access to the Wi-Fi, so then we can connect to our technology. It's called a creative point to connect to our technology, so then it connects back to Sedgwick County, and then we're completely on Sedgwick County's domain.
What a great example of working in the community. And now you're also developing your relationships with the car dealers to even further improve all this. So as much as it seemed like it's a lot of turmoil right now, it seems like the future is, to me, seems the future is bright in some long term, but a lot of it's bright in the real near future. So thank you for allowing me to say a few words.
Agreed, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Brandy, thank you again. Appreciate the work you're doing. We're happy to support and happy to continue to push reform. So I also want to publicly thank, I had a significant number of state legislators that have reached out and asked about ideas. And so I do think there's some sweeping reforms that will be at least proposed. We're also working with the Big Five Counties. That was a big part of the Big Five County discussion that we hosted here just last few weeks ago, and they're having significant challenges. We were asked to subsidize our tag office through Prop Tax Funds, about $600,000. Johnson County informed us they're subsidizing their tag office over $2 million a year. So it's, again, driving up property tax costs, which should be a fee-funded office. So thank you for your work. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Commissioners?
I will move to approve the lease amendment and authorize a transfer of $410,000 from the general fund to the auto license fund in 2025.
Second.
Okay. Motion? A second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 25, 2025.
Most popular guy in Sedgwick County, Joe Thomas.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. And the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, the regular meeting of September 25th, we have 10 items that we're seeking your approval. The first one is river sand for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Conspec Incorporated. They're doing business as Kansas Paving. It's at the rate listed, and we want to establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number two is hot mix asphalt for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Pearson Materials LLC and establish contract pricing. And this is based on the asphalt material index, and this will be for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the 3/4 inch SB 2 aggregate for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Southwest Butler Quarry LLC, and we're establishing contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number four is the SS-1H oil for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated, and we're establishing the contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number five is AB3 Rock for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Southwest Butler Quarry LLC, and, pardon me, and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number six, at this time, is being deferred. So we'll move on to item number seven, which is the on-call claims recovery and grant administration for the Division of Finance. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Delivering Results and Solutions, which is a Division of Specialty Program Group LLC. It's for the contract rates as listed, and this is good through December 31 of 2031. Item number eight is the on-call commercial real estate broker services for project services, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Lang Real Estate and CBRE Incorporated. They're doing business at CBRE. Did you pull that one, too?
Yes.
Okay, because I was told just number six. So eight, too?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Pardon me. So number eight has been deferred. We'll move on to number nine. Number nine is the copiers, printers, and multifunction devices with related accessories and services for various county departments. And we're establishing the recommendation to have a contract with Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA Incorporated. We're utilizing the Sourcewell Contract Number 1112124-KON, and that's good through January 10 of 2029, and it has three one-year options to renew. Item number 10 is the Stryker Power Load Power Pro 2 Expedition for Emergency Medical Services, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Howe Medica Osteonics Corporation. They're doing business at Stryker Sales LLC, and that's in the amount of $69,133.35. And item 11, which is the Agilent Technologies, this is the gas chromatograph mass spectrometry system for Regional Forensic Science Center, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Agilent Technologies Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $130,059.38. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions on these items, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you so much. To be clear with the Commission, there were 11 total items. We're deferring items six and items eight.
Correct.
Okay. My motion will include those deferrals. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Report of Bid, Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 25th, with the exception of items number six and number eight, which are being deferred.
Second.
I have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we pause? Let's pause the County Commission meeting. I want to call to order the governing body a fire district number one. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, go ahead and call the first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda on the fire district? Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of August 20, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, if you look at items A, B, and C, all Commissioners were present. So if there's, without any questions or concerns, I would like to combine all three into one motion. Okay, seeing no concern, I'll make a motion to approve the fire meeting minutes of August 20, September 3, and September 10, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Okay. Tom?
Chairman of Commission, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent item D on the fire agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, consent item D. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item D.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the fire district? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Executive session.
We have no executive session for the fire district, so officially adjourn the fire district and call us back to order for the Board of County Commission meeting. As we're getting ready to move into the next item, I do want to acknowledge that former County Councilor Mike Papoun is here, proud KU law graduate, a good Jayhawk. So we're glad that Mike is joining us today. Welcome back, sir. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, resuming County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Tom?
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items K through double-letter AF.
Okay. Commissioners, we've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items K through AF.
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Tom, you want to go back to board bid, or bid of boards?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. Inadvertently, item number six should not have been deferred. I'm going to have Joe come back and present just that item for Commission.
So we deferred item six through a motion. We're coming back now to talk about item six. Yeah. Joe, welcome back.
Yeah. Good to be back. Next week, I promise it'll be much, much smoother.
You're good, bud.
All right. And so Joe Thomas, again, for the record, and this is still part of the regular Board of Bids and Contracts, September 25th. And so we are asking the item six, which is the Insurance and Benefits Consulting Services for the Division of Human Resources, and here's the recommendation. We are asking that you please accept agreement with IMA Incorporated, and that's for a five-year total of $835,000.
Yeah. So Commissioners, it's been briefed. We've talked through this. My only question to Justin is, item six is not in the backup material. Is there a way to include that into the backup material at some point in time?
That's a good question. Chairman Justin Wyatt, our County Counselor, I don't know that you can retroactive. I mean, I think you could ask the purchasing director to include the minutes from that and give them to the clerk, and they can add them in as part of that. I know it was in your agenda review.
It is in agenda review.
Last Friday, and obviously, it was discussed at bid board. So I think it'd be permissible to handle it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm good with that.
We will do that, yeah.
And so, Joe, you'll be able to include that in the minutes. Okay, if you can do that to the clerk's office, that would be helpful. We'll get that uploaded. Okay, item six, I'll make a motion to approve item six from the Report of Bids and Contracts. A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Joe, good save, bud.
Thank you. I'll try not to return, okay?
You're good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Federal grants discussion.
Okay. There is a lot of discussion in the country around what's going on at the federal level right now, but in regards to how that's handling federal grants, we have nothing to update at this point in time, but we do have our board that is meeting, and we'll continue to update the Commission when needed. So, okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share with the public?
Okay, seeing none. Next item. Other.
Anything under other? Okay, I am going to make a comment about a topic of discussion that's been ongoing here at the county, and that's on the Kansas Partner Corrections Funding Formula. Something we've talked about frequently here. For those in the community that may remember, we, the Funding Formula, the Kansas Partner Corrections Secretary, announced that we're going to take a peek at the Funding Formula in December of 2024. We became aware that the proposed cut at that point in time was over 50% to Sedgwick County. And we were alarmed for a couple of reasons. Number one, the size of that cut, and the instrumental piece that Community Corrections has for this community. It's significant. On average, we are supervising upwards of 1,100 offenders a day here in Sedgwick County. So when we heard that was a proposed cut, we obviously were very frustrated. And we're told at that point in time that our lobbyists, we're going to continue to work the governor's office to try to make some adjustments there. We're also frustrated on another angle. The advisory committee that was formed included six different jurisdictions and counties. Sedgwick County was not part of that committee, even though we have the greatest need with the largest number of offenders lists that we're supervising, although we were not part of that committee. What really frustrated us was that those members that were on the committee all received significant increases in their funding allocation. Not to, not to be too much of a critic of the individual jurisdictions or the counties, but Johnson County is going to receive a 36% increase. Why Sedgwick County is going to receive a 38% decrease. This will decimate the programming that we have here in Sedgwick County. There will be more re-offenses, and it will impact public safety in this community. So we've been working for the better part of eight months through our lobbyists with the governor's office, and been told time and time again that they were reviewing, that they were reviewing. They didn't think that this was equitable to Sedgwick County, and they would review. And we were told last week that this final, this would be the final Funding Formula. So we were told Monday. We addressed it in staff meeting on Tuesday. We called a special meeting on Thursday last week. And then we also addressed it again on Friday. And we have each individually talked about this publicly. This is a significant community, public safety crisis here in Sedgwick County, and we're going to continue to appeal to the governor's office, the Kansas Partner Corrections, and ultimately, to the Kansas State Legislature to see if they can appeal on our behalf. So again, we're going to continue to talk about this, because again, this, I believe, is one of the biggest crises that we're facing here in this community. We are concerned about not just the transparency of the committee and the results that we find very troubling, but we're mostly concerned about the impact of this community if this funding cut is pushed through. It will be a significant impact to public safety and our capacity to supervise the offenders on our caseload. So I wanted to include that again during other, because we're going to continue talking about it publicly, but this is a significant challenge. The other piece that the mayor of Wichita was very frustrated about when I informed her, is we're supervising of that 1,100 offender list. About 300 of these individuals are not from Sedgwick County. These are called, these are courtesy placements. We have no choice. We have to receive many of these individuals. We can't say no. So some of these individuals have no ties to Sedgwick County. In fact, in 2023, of the roughly 275 courtesy clients that we had, 95% of them in 2023 had no case in Sedgwick County whatsoever. We have heard anecdotally of people that are being sent here in Community Corrections that are reoffending, ending up in our jail, and then telling us they have no idea why they ever came to Sedgwick County to begin with. They have no relationships, no connections here. So there are other jurisdictions dumping people into Sedgwick County, because we have resources, and we have a great Community Corrections program. And we're going to continue to appeal that that's simply not equitable to the people here in Sedgwick County. So I wanted to address that, because we're going to continue to loudly address this and appeal to the governor's office to take action. And I would just say, too, since we're winding up the meeting, and I have a little extra energy, that all those individuals that are running for governor, our eyes are on how much they care about Sedgwick County and what's happening in Sedgwick County. This is an executive branch of government, the Kansas Partner Corrections. This Funding Formula will be approved by the governor of the state of Kansas. We, all eyes are on Topeka and what's happening to see how much they care about community safety in Sedgwick County, one of the, the second-largest populated county with the largest city in the entire state of Kansas. So all eyes on what's happening there, and what we're asking for is equitable leadership. We're asking for reform, and we're asking for people in Topeka to contend for the citizens of Sedgwick County, who in my view are getting a raw deal in a big way. So we'll keep talking about it until we get some action. If we don't get any action, we'll talk louder. So it's not equitable what's happening in Sedgwick County. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to reflect on a news story that just came out. Heard about it this morning. This one is a 16-year-old shot a 23-year-old at the QuickTrip at Pawnee and Meridian at 2:53 a.m. And this is like the fifth or sixth juvenile shooting we've had in the area just in the last couple of weeks. And so I wanted to just reflect on what is happening. I heard from the chief of police in the news article, and, you know, he's talking about parents need to be better parents, and I don't disagree with him at all. But I think legislatively, there is, this is, again, a consequence of Senate Bill 367 that was passed in 2016. We have House Bill 2329, which, if you will, steps up, if you will, the penalties for juveniles that are caught in possession of a firearm. In fact, I've had conflicting data, but whether it's 100 or 200, I don't know that it matters officially to make my point here, that we had, I asked Corrections in a meeting just a week or so ago, how many juveniles were booked into JAC with possession of a firearm, and I think he said about 200. It was actually in the news, it was just about 100. But again, I'm not sure if that was which city, Wichita, or exactly what the, maybe the timeframe was a little bit different. But I said in the last 12 months, they said it was about 200. And again, I think if you booked juveniles, about, let's say, 200 juveniles into JAC over the period of a 12-month period, that 200 is not the whole amount. That's the tip of the iceberg. There's going to be hundreds of others that did not get caught. We had students in a high school that got caught with a loaded firearm in their backpack. At a school just a week or two ago, we had someone shooting a gun in the air, QuickTrip out northwest, right about the same timeframe. We had another incident where someone was, an exchange of fire, gunfire happened just a couple days ago. Another person was injured. And so you wonder what's going on. I guess the idea that we are helpless and hopeless, that we can't, there's nothing we can do, I don't agree with that. As a consequence of the law changing, I hope everybody hears me on this, the law changed, and this is the consequence. HB 2329 will help restore, if you will, some common sense to right now something that's unchecked. I talked with the folks on Team Justice the other day. They're a great group of people, and their hardest to help these kids. And they were not, they were not even aware of this proposal, House Bill 2329. The chief of police, in my opinion, Wichita Chief of Police, needs to talk about HB 2329. The city council members need to talk about HB 2329. To get this passed is going to require more than just a few people. We need the community to rise up and show support. So anyway, I'll just point out that the judges, the district attorney, the law enforcement officers I've talked with, the sheriff's officers, the corrections folks here locally, the DCF, and others have shown support for HB 2329. And the system feels like it's exasperated, like there's nothing we can do, but I don't agree. We need to move forward with this legislation. And the second thing I'd like to point out to Mr. Chairman is that I did spend, I took a trip down to Altus Air Force Base in Oklahoma, as well as down to Lakeland Air Force Base in San Antonio. I did, again, mention, I mentioned, a minute, a few minutes ago, I did... I did, again, mention, I mentioned, I mean, a few minutes ago, I did visit the Haven for Hope down there in San Antonio, which is a homeless facility down there, and I learned a great deal. In fact, I can't believe how much I did not know. It was very, very educational. It was great to see what they do down there. I was grateful for that experience. I asked a ton of questions, if you know me, I asked a ton of questions and got great information from what they're doing down in San Antonio, and I think there's things we can certainly learn from them. We're doing, we're doing a lot here. Our second light is based on their model. So to me, I think we're, we're certainly going in the right direction, but there's a lot of work to do, and again, they're so, they've been doing this for more than 20